Welcome to the March 15th joint meeting between the Powhatan County Board of Supervisors, and Powhatan County School Board. Madam Chair, Emel, would you like to bring your board, call to order?
Thank you. Good evening. I would like to call the Powhatan County School Board joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors to order. We have in attendance Rick Cole, District 1, Susan Smith representing District 2, and James Taylor representing District 4, myself, Kim Emel representing District 5. And we have one member Valerie Ayers, District 3, that would like to join us by Zoom. Is there a motion for that, please?
Madam Chair, make a motion. We allow Ms. Ayers to participate by Zoom.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed say no. Motion passes for zero. Now, we would like to make an announcement if that's all right with the Chair. All right, the School Board voted March 4th to hire the firm McPherson and Jacobson to work with us as we search for a new superintendent. They will be holding stakeholder meetings next week. Two community town halls will be on Wednesday, March 23rd at 1:00 PM at the PLC, also known as the Pocahontas Landmark Center, and 7:00 PM at the Powhatan Middle School. Community groups will be meeting on Monday, March 21st at 7:30 PM at the PLC. And county leadership will be meeting on Monday, March 21st at 11:00 AM at the PLC. Board members will be introducing the consultants at these meetings, but we will not be staying so community members can speak freely. The School Board will be meeting to discuss their criteria for a superintendent on Tuesday, March 22nd at 5:00 PM, followed by a public hearing on the School Board budget. As you can see in this process, the School Board is committed to transparency and wants to hear from you. So please attend. If you are unable to attend one of these town hall meetings, there will be a survey in English and Spanish on our website starting March 23rd through March 30th. Please take the time to let us know what you're thinking about the criteria for a new superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And at this time, I'll call to order the Powhatan County Board of Supervisors meeting for March 15th, 2022. Ms. Smith would help us with the pledge allegiance and Mr. Williams will do the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Darren LaFalle, thank you for another wonderful day in Powhatan County and all our many blessings. Amen.
Does anyone have any questions, change, postpone agenda items, additions or deletions, changes in the order of presentation? Not hearing any. Can I have a motion for approval of the agenda?
Some moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
At this time, we will open the floor up for public comment. Anyone from the public would like to come down and speak? Please do so now. You have three minutes as an individual. You'll be given five minutes as a representative of a group. State your name and address, please.
Jackwon Anderson, 3342 Pineacre Drive. As I drive around Powhatan, I see many new homes under construction. Recently, I've been cold called by real estate agents, hoping I would place my home on the market. Clearly, people are moving to Powhatan to enjoy the benefits our county offers. Despite this increase in county population, the number of students in our schools has decreased. Parents can no longer be assured that their children will receive a decent education in our public schools, and those with the means to do so are choosing better options. Local private schools are full and 506 students in Powhatan are home educated. Despite serving fewer customers, the School Board is requesting more funding. Contrary to remarks made in the School Board meeting about cuts, the state is actually increasing the amount they will send to PCPS. The Board of Supervisors has also well-funded the School Board. School expenditures make up over 58% of the entire county budget. The Landmark Center is overflowing with administrators, instructional specialists, and learning coaches who continue to find expensive new programs to try. Excuse me, but these expenditures have not led to improved academic outcomes for our children. This year, PCPS has spent our tax dollars on memberships to lobbyist organizations such as the BSBA and the VASS who support legislation that many in our community oppose. These memberships should be discontinued. Over $100,000 was spent on Wi-Fi for school buses. Random items such as fidget spinners are being purchased from Amazon each month. When I was in school, we used our pencils and pens and the zippers on our jackets for fidgeting. We didn't need expensive gadgets paid for by the taxpayer. None of these were prudent purchases or helped our students succeed. It is time to reconsider the policy of allowing the School Board to transfer unspent county dollars into their capital outlay fund at the end of the fiscal year. It has led to bloated budgets designed to deceive the taxpayer in order to fund pet projects. I do see positive movement in the area of transparency from the current School Board, and I believe they are starting to listen to the community rather than being a rubber stamp for the school administration. It will take time to eliminate established patterns of mismanagement and to rebuild community trust. Reducing wasteful expenditures would be a good place to start. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening. Daryl Griffin, 2756 Dorset Ridge Circle. First, let me start with what you're getting right. When I was 10 and in high school, I had to commit to a path. Then, at that point in time, it was the engineering STEM, as y'all would call it. My daughter, who's going into her junior year, is able, because of the programs you have put forward, to explore both a potential medical field and medical biology as well as a STEM path. I didn't have that opportunity when I was a kid. I had to lock in and commit. I like the fact that she's got multiple options to cultivate, to explore who she's meant to be. And that is a sum total of what's been going on the last two years with the schools. And nothing can sum up the arrogance that the schools, school administrators, and divisions, the whole statewide have said is, when we hear a doctor say, "We're doctors. We know better. Just trust us." Okay, there is no person in this county other than my wife who is more invested and knows better what's good for my child than us. And that's the same is true for any other parent out there. And the idea that we're sending teachers, and I understand that the School Board is working on this and you're addressing it, and that the change is slow, okay? But if you continue to send teachers to professional development type groups that are still teaching the woke agenda, when you're hiring graduates from woke universities, you're importing it. My major concern with the superintendent search is that the consultants will reach into that same pool and pull out a similar candidate, and we're just going to get the 2.0 version, the new and improved one, but it's going to be the same woke nonsense. That said, again, you guys are making positive steps in the right direction. But as a budgetary matter, they're spending too much. They don't need this much money. If we've got time, if employees have time to play political advocate, if administrators and central office have time to weaponize law enforcement against private citizens for speaking out as they did to me and other people. If they've got time for all this extracurricular activities and conferences, they don't need more money, they need less. I would ask, at least as a minimum for the Board, you can get a dollar figure. What are you spending on these programs? We'll call it for simplicity, the woke agenda. I call it social justice 101 because that's what they're trying to teach our kids to be. That's the desired output. Again, you guys are making steps in the right direction, but an increased budget and no change in terms of, other than just a polite retirement by the top, is not going to get it done. Thank you and have a good day.
Thanks, sir.
Good evening. Steven Rosell, 4209 Old Buckingham Road.
Welcome.
I wanted to, before the Board discusses the budgetary discussions, I wanted to ask a couple of questions about the $3.4 million in ESER grants that the county has either received or is planning on receiving from both the CARES Act and the American Rescue Plan Act. Though the grant money is not included in the normal budget, it appears as though there are line items that are very similar in the normal budget as well as the grant budget. And some of the grant budget monies may not be needed anymore now that certain mitigation strategies have been dropped. First and foremost, I'd like to ask if the county has completed or plans on completing a full audit of how the grant money has been budgeted and spent. And this is both for the ESER 1, 2, and 3 grants under the CARES Act and American Rescue Plan Act. In addition, the county, and I quote from the law, must periodically, but no less frequently than every six months, review and as appropriate, review its plan. The plan in question is the budget for the aforementioned grant money. I don't know if the county has really seen a proactive approach to following the requirements of the American Rescue Plan. Some of the items of note, $257,982 for contact tracers and stipends for staff to follow COVID protocols. Is the county still spending money on this even though there is no more contact tracing? And what were these stipends used for? $436,911 for learning recovery. And the county that has such a high percentage of honorable students, was all of this money needed? I'm running out of time. All right. $459,000 and change for virtual instruction. What's the percentage of students that are involved in virtual instruction? And is that all that money needed continuously through the remainder of the ESER grant period until September 2023? The law requires that you guys be transparent with the grant money, and I know it's separate from the normal budget, but I do ask that you respect the citizens' rights to understand where this money is coming from. Nothing is free. I mean, it was like a nice lottery ticket that the county got, right? We paid for it in many respects for nine, 10 months, and I'm sure we'll end up paying for it again. So if we could either return, not accept the rest, or figure out better ways to utilize the money that was not needed, I'd appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Not seeing anyone else. Do we have anyone on Zoom, Mr. Smith?
Mr. Chairman, Zoom is clear.
Okay, great. We'll close the public comment period. We'll go to old business, discussion of the Grant Award Educational Connection Trail Project.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Board, members of the School Board. Last year, we received the good news that we had been awarded a grant for the Educational Connection Trail Project, and we were just waiting for the appropriation for this. This week, we've got the news. Mr. Shartans will give you an update on the appropriation.
Yep, so last time, I believe it was last time we met, we discussed this project. As Mr. Smith had stated, that time, Congresswoman had sponsored it as part of a local project that she could sponsor in some of the infrastructure bills that they were doing since that time it passed the House, passed the Senate. And as of this morning, the President signed into law that package that includes numerous projects, including this one. So it is now fully funded. That just happened, so don't have a timeline yet for when it will go to construction. We'll be talking to them this week, I'm sure, and share that with you once we know. When we spoke last time, you all asked questions, wanted to make sure any security concerns of the school were incorporated into the design of that. Afterwards, we spoke with the Congresswoman's office to make sure what flexibility they had. And they said certainly, they want to make sure it's safe as well. So, working with school staff, sheriff's office staff, we can incorporate, you know, whatever you all would feel as far as working on the actual layout, where the connections are, if there needs to be any signage, gating, things like that. I think those are all reasonable, but they said we can work together to do things like that. So as we have a better idea on when we will go forward with the advanced design and engineering and then construction, we'll reach out to the schools and make sure you all stay close and working with us on the design on that. So that's where we are today on it. Happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Are there any questions from the School Board? Hearing none. Mr. Chairman?
Any from the Board of Supervisors, comments, questions? Great.
All right.
Wonderful. Thank you very much, Mr. Shartans. Moving right along. Next up, discussion for the FY23 budget. Dr. Jones would help us start that.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think there's a presentation that I'm going to go through very quickly. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. This is a presentation that we presented to the School Board last Tuesday. We've had since that time a budget workshop, but I'll go through this quickly and then be happy to answer any questions that members of Board of Supervisors may have. Just some academic highlights to begin with. These are reading and math scores for last year on the standards of learning tests that our students take. We were second in the region out of 17 school divisions in reading scores. We've consistently been second or third in those reading scores over the last several years. Math scores took a little dip last year, but we were still in the top third of the region and well above the state average in math. Our graduation rate last year was 96%. That includes passing courses and also other graduation requirements such as SOL tests. And then, we are very fortunate to offer a good variety of academic programs, both advanced programs such as Advanced College Academy, a plethora of advanced placement options, as well as many, many CTE offerings and credentials for students. So, and of course, those are all taught by our outstanding staff that are nationally and internationally recognized. This next slide just has comparison of staffing levels. You can see that we are staffing from a classroom teacher standpoint over the last seven years. It's been pretty flat. We've seen some increase in special ed. We did see an increase this year. Some of that was due to adding classroom teachers to deal with learning loss that was a result of the pandemic. We have seen some increase in paraprofessionals. Those are instructional assistants that help out in the classroom, both general ed and special ed. And a lot of that is driven by students' IEPs and for which we have to provide services for students. But all in all, our staffing has been pretty flat for the, since 2015-2016 school year. The School Board asked, and we talk a lot about SOQ, or Standards of Quality Funded Positions. And so this is a breakdown of what we are afforded by the state in terms of funding per formulas that are used at the state level and then where we currently reside in terms of our funding for different job classifications. I won't go through all of these. I will point out a couple of these to show that for many, many years, the state has talked about re-benchmarking to bring the SOQs back into compliance or something that is more realistic. They were massive cuts during the last great recession in 2008, 2009. If you look under O and M and transportation, it's on the right side of that column, under Instructional Supports and Operations. You can see the state only funds us for 29 positions in O and M operations and maintenance to run the schools, keep them safe and running, as well as all transportation. We currently have about 90 bus drivers that we need to offer transportation to students, get them to and from school safely. So being funded at 29 is something that's not even close to being realistic in terms of providing that service to our students. There are a couple others like that in terms of CTE teachers, something that we know this community values and that we all value in terms of providing options for students in career and technical education. We receive 7.5, funding for 7.5 teachers. We have 21 teachers in career and technical education. So, point of this slide is that those who've been on the Board a while know that when the state gives us raises, they like to say they're giving us raises for a 5% raise, but really what they're giving us is a portion of that money based on SOQ funding. On the next slide is average class size. This, again, is a priority in the community and among the School Board to keep class sizes reasonable so that our teachers can provide first-rate interaction with our students. And you can see that those class sizes remain low. We actually saw a reduction this year at the elementary level for the most part. That was specifically to work on learning loss and students that have been, had their education interrupted, making sure that we provided more one-on-one attention or small group attention with them, with their teachers. And our class sizes at the middle and high school level remain very attractive. The next slide talks about enrollment. You can see that our enrollment is starting to climb. These numbers are actually September 30th numbers, which is what we look at in terms of building the budget. We're actually funded on March 31st numbers, which are numbers that come from the state after the budget process and most years is over. So we use September 30th to plan, and we are projected to be at 4231 students next year, which is an increase over what we've received or what we had this year. This next slide talks about per pupil costs, and this is the cost of educating students in Powhatan. And we run that back, all the way back to 2010. And you can see it has increased since 2010, but we're not keeping track of the state average in terms of per pupil costs. Our per pupil cost in 2020 is actually 111th out of 132 school divisions in Virginia, meaning that 110th school divisions have higher costs per pupil than we do. That has consistently, that gap has widened over the last couple of years. We were 89th in 2018 and 101st in 2019. The biggest driver of our budget this year has been the composite index. As we've talked about for the last few months among the School Board, we saw a huge increase in our composite index. This is the state funding formula that shows what portion of the budget is funded by the state versus that's funded locally. And we saw the second highest increase in composite index of 133 school divisions, 132 school divisions this past biennium, going up from .4507 to .5146. We calculated that that would equate to $2,024,355 if we were using the composite index that we had last biennium. With this year's proposed budget by the governor, it would mean that we would receive $2,024,355. I actually sat down with Mr. Smith and his staff to look at these numbers and to review this so they could have an understanding of it. And they actually calculated what it would be if you use this year's dollars, and it's actually $2.3 million. So, that is something that we certainly are aware of and has been a challenge this budget season. This also shows some other budget increases that have happened over the last several years that are driving increased budgets. Just like the county BRS rates have gone up and we've seen increases, not this year for us thankfully, but in previous years, we've seen large increases in BRS. We've seen salary increases that are partially funded by the state as well as group health insurance. If you add those all up, then you have over $9 million in increases in the budget just in those three categories since FY13. One thing the School Board does is it often, every other year, we do a big salary study. We look at 12 or 13 school divisions, 12 other school divisions, and compare ourselves to them in lots of different job classifications. And then try to, a goal the School Board has had is to try to be in the middle, to be in the median of those 13 school divisions for the last several years. The School Division, the School Board with the support of the Board of Supervisors has done a good job in a couple areas, including our most important employees in terms of their impact on students, and that's teachers. We're actually ranked sixth this year, which is just above the median. In our overall rank and bus drivers, we are sixth as well. I'm sure you've seen newspaper articles and read about some of our neighbors really struggling with bus drivers and transportation. And I think the way that we compensate and work with our bus drivers, we have not had those problems that other school divisions have had. The School Board identified two categories, mechanics and secondary system principals, where we were ranked in the bottom of the region. And they have made that a priority to try to do some targeted adjustments to address those areas. I will point out that for all of these classifications, we look at annual salary, but we also break it down to an hourly rate because a lot of employees, based on the division they're in, they have different contract lengths, they have different work hours. So we break it down to an hourly rate, and that's what we're using for this comparison here. We also like to look at in terms of competitiveness and hiring of staff and looking at what our neighbors are doing in terms of their proposed compensation for this year. You can see that we don't have information for Amelia Henrico or Prince Edward. Henricos just came out. They're doing 5% for their employees. And I know it's been proposed for county employees too, but you can see that we're pretty consistent in terms of doing 5%, and then some targeted adjustments to address competitiveness as well as compression in salary scales. This is a slide that many of you have seen before as well. This kind of breaks down our costs into big categories. Just like many organizations, payroll and benefits of our staff are a large majority of our budget. It's 85.45%. We also look at fixed plan operations, which are things like electricity, heating, oil, water, telephone. That is 6.3%. And then fixed instructional and vehicle, which talks about school resource officers, regional school tuitions, leases, vehicle fuel, softwares and licenses for things, that is 5.3%. And then we look at the other, which are what we call variable costs. Those parts that we have control over in terms of spending, and that is $1.4 million or just 2.87% of our budget. That's actually gone down significantly from the year before, which was a little over 4% and a decrease of about $600,000, $700,000. So given that background information and those factors, we looked at what our budget priorities would be from the School Board. Salary increases was the number one priority, 5% salary increase for all employees plus targeted increases to address compression and competitiveness. Also wanted to maintain Also wanted to maintain staffing levels to provide direct support to students and to maintain our curricular, co-curricular and extracurricular programs that are so valuable to our students and the community. So what, where we ended up is that we are looking at doing some targeted increases. We're proposing a 5% across the board raise and some targeted increases following along with what the county has proposed for teacher salary scale to bring all steps up to the region median. We're also looking for 5% plus some targeted increases for both mechanics and secondary system principals, but only to bring them up to ninth in the region. So they'd still be below the median, but there would be some increases. And then we have created a line item for band instruments, one of our most popular programs and a source of pride in the community. We've purchased band instruments previously through school funds or fundraising by the band. We have created a line item for band instruments in the amount of $10,000. In order to do that, we've had to make reductions in our budget in order to bring them into balance. I think we are at 1.860,000 out of balance. We have reduced the technology budget by deferring the purchase of Chromebooks for our students in grades three through five. We've, and again, this is a presentation from last Tuesday. We had another budget workshop Monday, as I'll remind you. We've now reduced travel conference and mileage line items by 50%. We're also reducing dues and memberships in addition over that 20%. The board has asked that the sped lead teacher be added back into the budget. So we're actually reducing nine FTEs, so we're reducing nine full-time staff. Our assistant director of human resource position, a computer technician, parent resource coordinator, and then propose right now are six instructional assistant positions. This is a summary of our revenue and expenditures. As we all are waiting for the state to complete their budget, and we know now it'll be a few more weeks before that happens, but we're operating off the Governor Northam's proposed budget. We'll be getting $64,000 additional from the state. Of that money from the state right now, $2,092,515 is set aside for school construction and can only be used on school construction. We have a local, based on the county administrator's proposed budget of $2,117,000 and then federal and local sources of 162,000. So that total change is there. And then we have numbers for expenditure changes, 5% salary for all employees plus the targeted increases, the health insurance rate increase that we received. We've offset that by reducing the FTEs. And then line items have changed as well. And then the school-state construction is again a separate line item per se because it can only be used for construction items. So that is the presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions or defer to the school board if they have comments that they would like to make.
Thank you, Dr. Jones.
You're welcome.
All right, any comments? We'll start with District One, comments on the budget.
Dr. Jones, if you don't mind, could we put up that other two sheets that you've got as an attachment just so they can, so we can see?
Sure.
Separate attachment.
I think it's at the beginning of this because she's got it all in the PDF. Yeah, the first two, yeah. Are these the ones you're referring to, Mr. Cole?
Yes, sir. Just so people can see that and see the differences in where money is in the categories there. Yes, we are getting more state money in total.
Mr. Cole, would you, with that mask, would you get a little bit closer to the microphone, please? Thank you.
We are getting more state money in total. It's just the money is categorized in a different way so that it does not allow us to spend that money on anything we want to. So that's a very important point for us to remember. Easy when you look, you know, it's easy to be confused by that. You know, with the nine, with nine reduction, nine staff members being reduced, we'll actually have less staff members than we did last year when you look at it. So, you know, that's all I've got at this point. I think it's a lot to digest. I know the board, the school board has worked very hard at trying to reduce some of these costs in here. It's particularly the ones that we've heard from the public about. You know, it's still a working budget at this point, and we appreciate people's input.
All right, District Two. Ms. Smith.
I don't have anything specific to point out other than we, I feel like the board has been very diligent in trying to be transparent and give a good look for the public as well as ourselves into all of the categories that our money can go and be used. And we continue to look at that to make better choices and make the best choice for our students and our staff. Thank you.
District Three, Ms. Ayers.
Thank you. I have no comment at this time. So thank you very much.
District Four, Dr. Taylor.
Well, as Mrs. Smith just said, we've, I think, done a really good job of trying to be transparent throughout this whole process and look at all the different categories and do everything we can to bring the budget into line, knowing that we had some of these different monies coming in that were going to be harder to work with. And so I feel that we've done a very thorough job. We've done very good job of being transparent and then just taking a really strong look at every single category to make sure that we are bringing everything in line. So we've worked diligently on this, and I think we've put something good forth.
And I represent District Five. And as the chair, I have asked that we go line by line and hold some workshops, budget workshops, which have never been done in the past because I feel with new board members on board with us and because of the call for transparency from the public that it was necessary to do so that we could all understand where money is going. I still had some other things that I wanted to look at, and I would like also to make sure that we are compensating our teachers so that they will be staying in this county to continue teaching our students and also to make sure that the most money in the budget goes to the classroom where our students and teachers are. Thank you.
Supervisors, comments, questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Carmack.
I have a question for Dr. Jones regarding the school construction monies, the $2 million that we're getting for that. Is that going to be like a one-time? How's that going to look in the future? Is that a sure thing? Can you break down a little more specificity of what it can be spent on? Is, and is that going to be an expected annual occurrence?
That's a good question. So there, one of the things that I believe the two houses, General Assembly, are looking at is how to allocate that money. So I think in the Senate version, it would be similar to this of getting a lump sum payment and that it would be part of the budget moving forward. And then I'll talk about what that would be used for in just a second. The House is actually talking about doing grants based on need. So instead of giving each school division that money, that it would be pooled at the state level and then school systems could apply for it. That is something that we're not in favor of because I think it, it doesn't take into account the commitment that Powhatan has had to have good facilities and to keep them operational and to upgrade them. And it rewards those school divisions that may not have been able to do that, but also may have chosen to spend money elsewhere. So I've reached out to our representatives and said that we prefer to get the slump sum because it does provide us with some flexibility. It can be used for new construction, can be used for renovation. It can be used for like technology upgrades or other large equipment upgrades. It can be used to pay down debt. So those are the main uses that it can be used for. The original language in Governor Northam's budget was is this, but this year's money needed to be expended by 2025. So we would have a few years to spend that money. What we've talked about, if we do receive that money, is placing it into the capital maintenance reserve fund because then it wouldn't have to be expended and re-appropriate or re-appropriated every year. It would give the school board and the board of supervisors some time just to determine how best to use that money.
Okay, and so it is, it does, and so it is a pretty much a sure thing.
I think we're going to get some money one way or the other.
Okay.
It's just how much we receive and in what?
That's still up for debate. Okay, got it. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am. Anyone else? Yes, Mr. McClung.
On page 15, Dr. Jones, the full-time employees that were, it's going to be reduced, were those positions vacant or they filled positions at this?
Some of, well.
Some of these positions look like pretty key positions to be getting rid of.
Yeah, well, we have a.
Six instructional assistants.
Right.
That's a very important role at the schools.
Yes, it is. And some of those are vacant positions. Or remember, I said that some instructional assistants are driven by students' IEPs and students are moving up to. So we've identified three of those positions that we would no longer need and that wouldn't be filled as part of the regular budget process. Some of them are ones that we added to assist in the clinic when we were going through the pandemic. That's one of those positions. So some of them would be vacant positions. Some of them would be ones that would be reductions in the classroom. And then we have an opening as a director of human resources. So we are planning on moving our assistant director up to the director position and not filling that position. The parent resource center position is retirement that we're not going to fill. And the computer technician is staffed with somebody, and that would be a reduction of a person.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Williams, Mr. Cox?
Not a Dr. Jones, no, thank you, sir.
Yep, Mr. Williams.
Chairman, Dr. Jones, I want to be absolutely sure I understand how you're calculating the delta in the composite index. Now, the dollar figure you're representing is the actual difference that we're getting from what we would have gotten if we had the composite index like we did last year versus this year. Is that correct?
Correct. So we go line item through line item through the budget, and we do it based on last year's budget because that budget was approved and we know what those numbers are. And so we went through any SOQ-funded line item in the calculation tool that we received and determine what the difference is with the new composite index.
I'd like to get this question out of the way since it came up at public comment. What is a fidgety item?
Pardon me?
A fidgety item.
A fidget spinner is a, students with disabilities or students that have.
Anxiety.
Anxiety or ADHD or hyperactivity. It's a tool that they use to focus themselves and to allow them to better focus in classroom.
I can use this pen as an example. Many of them are circular and they have buttons you can push, keeps you busy, your hands busy doing something. Some people like to shake their legs when they're talking and some people like to move their hands. This is just another way to.
Well, I've actually seen those items in offices of the professionals. So I just want to make sure.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Smith.
Mr. Williams, they might have been known as also stress balls that you could squeeze and holding your hand and it not be such a big distraction to other kids around them.
I was just wondering whether I had to get one or not.
I would be happy to share some of mine.
Please. So I understand what we're dealing with. We're looking at a two-point, really, it looks like a 2.8 difference. 2.8. So you've outlined some of the administrative cuts. One of the things that bothers me, and I've always seen this going back multiple years, the teacher's aides are always, the instructional assistants are always targeted. And that bothers me because, you know, our core mission is teaching. So anytime I see that, I always ask the question, could that money be found someplace else? Because that's our job, is education. So I'll just put that out there as a comment. I'll let y'all go through that later. You've got 20% reductions in travel, 20% reductions in memberships. Everybody knows I work for the state. I remember when we fell on hard times, we were actually restricted in travel. So I'm wondering why a percentage as opposed to restricting it on a as-need basis?
And that was, again, that was a, that number was from a original projection. We've actually reduced that by 50% now, and we really feel like the remaining 50% is what we will need for required trainings. And within that is also mileage that we pay to itinerant teachers, homebound instructors and other staff that have to travel. So we talked at our last budget workshop that discretionary travel to go to conferences would not be something that we would be doing next year with this reduction of 50%.
Well, the other thing that we would do in the state when I was working is conferences went away. You know, unless you were a presenter or something like that, you absolutely had to be there, you know, and particularly out of state travel. That, you might as well not even ask.
Right, and again, we have, what was discussed by the school board and shared is that we would not be going to conferences next year unless it was, like you said, somebody was chosen to present as an honor or it's a required, we have some required training by law that we have to do. And if that was a, something that we had to travel to do, that that would be the only travel that would occur.
And if I could, Dr. Jones, Mr. Williams, so that is from the top down, including school board members, administration, as well as our teachers and employees. We, as Dr. Jones has said, we do have to have some mileage in there for employees that travel between schools and also the homebound instructors. So that, what's left, we were told, was what we needed bare minimum for that. Is that correct, Dr. Jones?
Yes, ma'am.
That's why I was getting that.
Yes, yes, that was our first.
Trying to make a, you know, difference, you know, in the two types of travel.
Right.
I understand travel in the sense of, you know, fulfilling your job description. The numbers that you've given us for enrollment over time, Charlotte Schubert sent us something, I think this may have been from the CAFER, I'm not sure. I can't match the numbers up with the students' attendance. Is it because we're doing it at different points in time, but they're by fiscal year?
Yeah, so the numbers that we use for the budget are September 30th enrollment numbers. And I believe the numbers in the CAFER are March 30th numbers, which are our ADM numbers. So it's really the difference between enrollment, how many kids are in our school versus ADM, which is what we're funded on by the state.
Well, the trend, it seems has gone down in terms of number of students. You know, what I'm looking at from the CAFER. In 2012, you're at 4,700, approximately 4,786. And then most recently, 2021, it's got a number of 4,076. Is that something that's going to be projected for the foreseeable future?
Well, we have seen an increase in our, both ADM and our enrollment over the last couple of years, so it is ticking back up. And we certainly have no reason to think that's not going to continue, but we don't see any large increases based on our projections in enrollment moving forward.
With the 5% increase that the state has proposed, and do we have any options on that? For example, you know, last year when we gave the 5%, and some of the localities use that in other ways, for compression and things like that. Some didn't do 5%. I think Powhatan was probably the only locality to give that type of percent raise because we didn't give bonuses. We said we would do the 5%, the exception being Henrico, where they did that generational raise. And, you know, wasn't any way we won't even come close to doing something like that. But do we have any options? But do we have any options this year on the five percent?
The, I think there's flexibility. Again, I think we'd have to wait till we see the final language within the budget. But previously, there's been flexibility to do an average of five percent. So as long as you can certify that you've given an average of a five percent raise, you could give more than five percent to some individuals. You can do less than five percent to offset that to other employees. You could also do a pro-rated amount and do less than five percent overall, do three percent. That would just reduce the incentive money that you would get from the state.
Okay, but no other options. It all has to be targeted to a pay increase.
Yes, that is, that's correct. And again, there's different, I think the Senate has, still has the five percent in there. And I think the House, when they released their budget, had a three-point-six percent increase and then like a one-point-four percent bonus for employees this year that would be included in their budget.
Let me go back to a question as Carmack asked about the, what was it, one million dollars? Or what was the amount of money for construction?
Just over two million.
Just over two million. And you said, you know, one of the versions, you know, it looks like, you know, we would have going into 2025, the flexibility. And it could be used for, you know, restoration or, you know, repairs and things like that. How much of your budget, your facility budget today is targeted to doing those types of, you know, renovations, ongoing repairs that the two million dollars could potentially be used for going forward if that comes through the general summary?
We'd have, I'd have to look at that and get back to Mr. Williams on a specific amount. We have some money set aside for repairs and those types of things. It's not a lot of money. But we can really figure that out by going back and looking at dotted items and totaling it up.
Mr. Johns, could you come up to the podium, please, so that
I can.
the audience can hear us or can hear you rather, excuse me.
Yes, ma'am. I was saying that the normal repairs that we do would not qualify, I do not believe. You know, we'll need to get the final language, but if we were renovating something, then those dollars could be used for that. For example, Dr. Tibbs has made presentations about potentially renovating part of PLC to take care of preschool students. Monies could be used for that type of project because it's a renovation.
If the board chooses to do that, we have not voted on that yet, but that is an example of
Yes.
of what we could do. So would the other items on our CI, yeah, our CIP list be used? Could be used for that as well, Dr. Jones?
Yes, ma'am. Any of the items on the CIP, I think Mr. Williams asked a good question. And we don't have final language to know what's the difference between a repair and a CIP item. You know, if the chiller goes out at the high school again and we have to replace that, that may be something that we're able to use this money for. But until we see the final language, we don't know.
And that would come out when the numbers come out.
Right. When the budget's passed, it would have that detail in it, we hope.
Well, that's going to bring me around to the next question. Your capital maintenance reserve fund came up in public comment about how monies were being spent from that. I know fifty percent of it has to go for infrastructure. And then the other fifty percent, you have discretion with our approval. Is that correct?
Correct. That money cannot be spent by the school board without approval from the board of supervisors. That's the current MOU that we have and resolution that we have for that fund.
Has that been spent on infrastructure or has it been spent on something else?
It's only been spent on infrastructure. It hasn't been spent on anything else. I think we had a request that came through this year for some safety issues at the playground at Pocahontas Elementary to repave that. Those are the types of items that we would look to spend that that fund through.
And so what is that amount today?
It's on page.
You can exercise. Yeah, one point four nine six.
Yeah, I just wanted to check.
Thank you. Keeping me on my toes.
You don't have to be on my toes. I think it was three years ago when we did that energy savings program with trains. Did we ever see that money come back? Because the way it was supposed to work, as you recall, that the money that we were going to spend going out to market, it was going to come back to us in savings. So when I was tracking that, you know, you know, the end of the, you know, the first year and I asked for that figure, we said, we're still calculating that. Are we still calculating it or did we realize a gain? And have we seen that gain reflected in your budget?
We, this past fall, we finished the, I can't remember what the term they use for, but basically the measuring of the effect of that. And we are meeting our targets for that. So that is in our budget and we have met the targets of energy savings that were forecast for us as part of that project.
And did we see that money realized in the transfer?
I don't know that that has been discussed, Mr. Williams.
Excuse me, Mr. Williams. We did have a presentation on that. Could you forward the numbers that you gave to us during that presentation to the board of supervisors?
I'm trying to think what presentation that was.
It was at one of our meetings, one of our fall meetings.
I'll be happy to do that.
I'm sure that we have it.
Yeah.
We'll have that forwarded to you. Thank you.
Okay. Another question that came up in a previous meeting some months ago, not that many months ago, was about the bus garage. We had the sheriff come down and express concern over the cost of an oil change. That was a hundred and fifty dollars. We had the fire chief come down. He had a concern about being able to get his emergency vehicles repaired during Christmas, spring break. And the staffing was an issue, the staffing and cost. I've heard some discussion about, you know, where the responsibility for the bus garage, you know, lies. Whether it should be with us or with the schools. My concern tonight is how well are we doing with addressing those two problems that came up some months ago?
Know that we looked at the oil change the sheriff's department had referenced and there was other work done besides just an oil change that factored into that cost. So it wasn't just a simple oil change. There were other equipment that had to be replaced or inspection that had to be done. So that was part of that cost. I know that we had mechanics on duty and available during the Christmas break. I believe the fire department called in and wanted to order one part, which we facilitated. We've also had ongoing discussions leading up to the summer about being open five days a week instead of four days a week. So Mr. Schmither and I have discussed that. We've discussed that with the staff there. So we are being responsive to the, to the requests that we have heard and the concerns that we've heard from the departments that we serve in that bus garage.
Well, that's going to be a concern I have going forward because, you know, it has to be there. Those people have to be there when they're needed. You know, because that was the whole purpose of the bus garage. And I go back a ways on this, back when we had the barn. So that's going to be, you know, a crucial sticking point for me, making sure that we're staffed, you know, during the times we need to be staffed and that we're providing, you know, again, this thing was supposed to save the county money. Because, you know, we were going out and getting the repairs anywhere and everywhere. So it was two reasons for doing this. One is because the barn needed to go. I called it the museum. And the second reason was, you know, we wanted to have better service for our vehicles, better turnaround and cost savings. And I want to make sure that we're meeting those goals going forward. So we're not going to get this resolved tonight, but I would like to have something back from y'all showing me how you're meeting, you know, performance standards, you know, goals and objectives as it, you know, as it pertains to those two things.
Be happy to do so.
Mr. Chairman, that's all the questions I have at this time.
Yeah, excuse me just a minute. Could we also get that that's in their book, is it not, Dr. Jones, the memo?
Yeah, there's a memo about the bus garage in there as well. And I know we've given some, another memo in July to the board of supervisors that had some costs and figures in there as well. But we'll be happy to update that information if there's more relevant information to have.
Okay, and I believe it's in tab twenty-four for the board of supervisors. If you can check that for more information as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Cox?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The presentation or packet, could you put number three up there, page three, which is, I think, the first one that has the little budget? There we go. Can we blow up the payroll and benefits? There we go. No, go down. Keep on going down. There we go. Payroll and benefits provide a five percent increase and more. You've got a million nine-nine-one-one-nine-two. Just so that Dr. Jones will understand this. As you pointed out, with the standards of quality positions that are funded. Okay, we will pay for some of the five percent and some of it theoretically, we'll work with what we got right now. Will come from the state. Does this one million nine-nine-one-one-nine-two have five percent for everybody in there? Or is it reduced for the money that's coming back, that we think is coming back from the state?
No, what we're currently proposing is a five percent raise for all employees plus.
We're not going to have to pay for all of those.
Excuse me?
We're not going to have to pay for all of those. You're going to get some of that money from the state.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so my question is that one nine-nine-one will be reduced in reality based, Mr. John's shaking his head, so that, help me, sir.
Do you need to come to the podium, please, Mr. Johns, to answer the questions?
Yes, sir. Mr. Cox, the, this is the expenditure side of the budget. So it does have the total cost in it. But on the revenue side of the budget, we do have included that state share component of it. So, and it's a lower, a lot lower number than this, as you know.
So this is expenditure side. Over on the revenue side, you have just what you think you're going to get from the state.
Yes, and I'd have to look at my book, but it's a six-hundred-and-eighty-thousand, seven-hundred-thousand-dollar number is the incentive from the state for that raise.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Do you have your book with you, Mr. Johns? Okay, if you wouldn't mind looking that up so we could have the exact figure while the next question's being answered or asked. Thank you.
Great. Any other supervisor?
I'm through with Dr. Jones. I have some questions for Mr. Schmither later on.
Okay.
Let's work on this.
Okay.
Dr. Jones.
Absolutely, right. So no problem. Ms. Carmack?
Yeah, one more question for Dr. Jones. The sixty-four thousand one thirty-eight from the state sources. Being they haven't passed their budget, do you expect any big dramatic change in that number?
We could see more money from the state. You know, we haven't seen final numbers from that, both budgets. And I think it's so volatile because they're billions of dollars apart that it'd be hard to estimate what that is. But there's a chance, if it's closer to the senate version, that we could see a few hundred thousand extra from the state.
And will that affect your timeline with passing your budget? I know they're kind of, you have to do yours first, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
And, okay.
We'll do ours and then have to amend it. If it's, we are slated to pass, the school board slated to pass our budget April nineteenth.
Okay.
Which I think is the latest we've ever done, but we pushed it out knowing that this would be a year where we may have to do that. But if we don't have final state numbers, we'll just have to come back and amend it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carmack. I've got some questions. The, I'm going to go back to the state school construction, two million dollars. And I know that's a number that's, we don't know yet. And I also understand you don't know how that money's going to be distributed potentially to. But you did mention one thing there that would be, I guess, under the criteria of acceptable for a way to disperse of some of that funding was technology. Do you have intentions of using that money to buy the Chromebooks that you have here to reduce technology?
No, that, we really haven't had any discussions with the school board about how best to spend that money because there's so much uncertainty there. But certainly, as we understand it, that could be one of the large purchases of technology could be a good use for that money, or at least an acceptable use, I should say.
So the three-hundred-and-twenty-thousand-dollar reduction to the balanced budget could potentially be covered with the two million, depending upon how the money comes from the state. The, to reduce your travel conference and mileage, Mr. Williams touched on that a little bit. What is the total amount that you're reducing, being you amended this amount this past Monday? How much are you reducing it?
It's a little over sixty thousand dollars.
So your travel conference and mileage normally runs a hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars a year?
Please come to the podium so we.
Come on up. You might want to move to another chair if you want to sit down after Mr. Johns.
I think you're right, sir. The travel at one point in time, when we first worked through everyone's request, we reduced it twenty percent. That brought it down to a hundred-and-twelve thousand. Then, in another budget work session, we reduced it another fifty percent. And so that sixty-thousand-dollar number was already, you know, that second reduction, we'd already made a reduction. Right now, division-wide travel for everybody is fifty-six thousand, seven-hundred-and-ninety dollars left in the budget. And that basically is, there's a couple of required, you know, training things. And the rest of it is local mileage for staff and teachers to move from school to school or for homebound instruction and those type things. And so that, that fifty-six thousand is the total amount remaining in the budget for travel at this stage.
Make yourself comfortable. I've got some more questions, but I'd like to hear from a board member on the school board. There's fifty-six thousand left, according to Mr. Jones, here. And most of it is to go from school to school. How many times do we go back and forth from school to school?
Well, we have teachers that are, I guess that would be this, this speech therapist. It would be the occupational therapist. Those types of teachers go from school to school because we only have one of them for the whole district. Then we also have homebound teachers that students that can't come to school. Those teachers see students, is it every day after school or whoever they're in charge of?
It just depends, yeah, on what their level of service we have to provide them as. But yes, we have a lot of teachers and staff that go to students' homes throughout the county to provide in-person home instruction and those people receive mileage for those costs as well.
Okay, so are there any other board members that can answer Mr. Bailey's question? Those are the ones that I can think of right off the top of my head. School board members? Dr. Taylor?
Well, I don't have, I can't clarify, but Dr. Jones, it might be helpful if you could say like a number, like how many of our employees are traveling on those specific items? Homebound?
I don't have a number off the top of my head, but I'll be happy to get that for you. It's a lot.
Okay, so the breakdown, what, what we'd like to say is we had two full-budget workshops, those two full days. At the end of the second budget workshop, they, the staff was done explaining to the school board their budget, the superintendent's budget as to what they are showing us. So then after that, we had a meeting last week and then we, we told them of some of our cuts that we'd like to see. And then we met on Monday to discuss some of those cuts. And that is where we're at, where we keep on going. So we asked for more cuts yesterday and we had asked for more specifics. So I guess we'll add that to the list, if you would, Dr. Jones. We would like to have a specific list of what the fifty-six thousand dollars goes to, what employees that need to travel from school to school. And then a separate list for the homebound teachers. And then if you would let us know what other employees that would cover. Is that what you're looking for, Mr. Byer?
Yeah, that's sufficient. Also with that, back to the two million, which is sort of like, I don't know how we can have good budget conversations. We don't know the dollar amount. That's, that's just a tough situation. And two million dollars is a significant amount of funding. You can also pay down some debt with that. As a school board. also pay down some debt with that. As a school board, how much debt would you guys pay down with that?
Well, that's part of the, the construction fund. We can, we can use it for construction, we can use it to pay down the debt, and I believe there was one other thing we could use it for.
Renovation.
Renovations, yeah.
Or to purchase land.
Or purchase land. So, there are, so far, that's what they have told us, but as Dr. Jones has said, we don't have any final.
Do you guys think you would use some of that funding to pay down debt?
Would you like us to use some of that funding to pay down debt?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know what the amount would be, but anytime you can do that, I think that would be a good thing to do. A fiduciary positive for the county.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr.
Hold, hold on just a minute. Let me, let me finish my questioning here. I'm on this page of the cuts, and, you know, my opinion, I know you guys have worked diligently, and you've worked hard at it.
We're not done yet.
Well, I, I'm glad for what you've done, and I appreciate it very much. I think it's, in my short time on this board, it's kind of interesting to see that you're putting forth so much interest, because I think it's a good thing to try and do. But I'm looking at these nine full-time FTEs that you're reducing, and the very first one was the Assistant Director of Human Resources. I was at your last meeting, where this person really, I think, was the Assistant Director of Human Resources, was moved into the HR department's director's job. So, this is basically a position that you're just choosing right now not to fill. Am I right?
That's correct, yes. Well, I should say, that is what the superintendent and the staff have recommended because of that, that they are saying that that person would go, excuse me, is the acting director at this time, and then some of those duties, well, she would be doing both the Assistant Director duties and the Director duties, and then, if needed, would be dispersed among the department. Is that correct, what I'm understanding? Yes.
Good. Then I looked at your sped lead teacher, and I heard the comments that night, computer technician, parent resource coordinator, and six instructional assistants. I enjoyed your school, last school board meeting. I mean, it was kind of, it was positive to me to hear what you were doing, or at least trying to do, and everybody's effort, and your collective effort to work together, which I applaud you for that.
Could I just say, take a moment and say, thank you, Mr. Bailey. I appreciate you taking time to let us know that.
Absolutely, absolutely. Mr. McClung brought up the six instructional assistants, Mr. Williams brought up the six instructional assistants, and now I'm gonna bring up the six instructional assistants. I think instructional assistants are extremely important. I think anytime you have people that are in front of the kids, the students, I think that's where you really need to focus, because quite frankly, as far as I'm concerned, that's your job, to educate the kids in this county, keep them safe, and educate them. My question is, with the cuts of twenty seven, forty thousand dollars, eight thousand in dues and memberships, and this is a nine people, it's a lot, because they, there's nine people that won't have employment, but how come there is not more cuts from the administration office in your budget? What I'm saying there is, the teachers and the instructional assistants, I think, need to be in front of, you know, our most prized possession, our children. My question is, why are the cuts not more related to central office administration? And I don't care who answers.
Any board members want to answer that?
I'll start, Madam Chair.
Please, go ahead.
We are looking at this budget, and we are still in discussion about how these raises will be dispersed, who will get them, and the percentage at which they will get them. It is an ongoing discussion. Until we finalize and, and vote on this budget, just stay tuned, is all I can tell you, because it's something we continue to speak about and talk about, and hard decisions will have to be made. But we, we are, we are working, trying to come to the best decision for our students and, and all staff members.
Any other board members that would like to add to that?
Madam Chair.
Oh, can I, before you, I'd also like to say, at the, yesterday's meeting, I had asked for the organizational chart to be, of the central office, to be added to our meeting, and it is, and it has been, and it is on board docs for anyone that wants to see it. And as Ms. Smith has said, we are looking at everything. We don't have hard numbers yet, but we do, every job is important, but we do know that once we get the numbers, we're gonna have to balance our budget. Dr. Jones?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I will say that I obviously agree with Mr. McClung and Mr. Williams, and Mr. Bailey. Instructional assistants provide a valuable role. I think anytime you're in a position where you have to reduce staff, one of the things you look at are, where are vacant positions? It's a lot easier to eliminate a position than it is to eliminate a person. So, as I said earlier, some of these instructional position, instructional assistant positions are, will be vacant next year, and that's why they were brought up for elimination. I'll also point out that, as you looked at our staffing chart that we started off our presentation with, the only area that we've seen large growth in our numbers of staffing has been in instructional assistants. We've added eighteen point five instructional assistants over the last five or six years. So, I think that's something else that you look at is, where is, where have you seen growth? Do you still need that and evaluate that? So, that's why we've looked at the instructional assistants. It has nothing to do with the value that they offer to our students in our schools.
I think probably everybody you have in the school system has value.
Absolutely.
Without any doubt. The.
Can I also add something else, Mr. Chair? You did say, Dr. Jones, that four of them will no longer be needed, and I think it went back to the comment we had from one of the constituents about the, the grant money, or the, the jobs. You said that, would you explain again specifically which ones are going to be cut because they are no longer needed for, I believe you said, the clinic was one, because we no longer need the extra one for contact, contact tracing?
Well, we added not just for contact tracing, just because of the extra workload in the, in our clinics throughout our schools. We had added a clinic attendant to help out and to assist. So, that would be one of the positions that we would not need. And then we have three that are instructional assistants that are, work specifically with students, and those students are moving on. And so, because they're tied to that student, they won't be needed. So, those are the other three positions.
So, in other words, there are four that really were gonna go anyway, that we, we weren't gonna keep anyway.
But either go or be reassigned to another responsibility, but those, again, are ones that we feel like we could reduce without impacting, you know, direct aid in the classroom.
So, technically, it's only two that we are, that four of them wouldn't have been refilled, is what you're saying. Is that correct?
Could, right, exactly, yes. I think that's fair.
We're just saying that two would be ones that we would currently have, if I'm understanding correctly.
Mr. Bailey, while you're between thoughts, I, I will say
Mr. Cole?
That we've worked really hard to reduce class sizes, where some of these folks may have been needed in the past. So, we've got smaller class sizes in the elementary schools, so it's been offset a little bit there. So, so the need is not as great as it may have been a few years ago. The other thing that, that I think we keep a close eye on is how our central office staffing levels compare to what everybody else has similarly around us. And we consistently are lower than most of the people around us. So, you know, I think it's, it's an easy thing to look at, you know, your central office, wherever it is, the bosses, wherever they may be, and say, hey, we don't need as many of them. But the work, you know, I don't work, I don't know exactly what everybody does every day. I have a pretty good idea of it. But work has to be done, especially in terms of reporting, you know, the amount of things that we have to report back to the state and federal government, especially with, you know, with the Easter grant, for instance, we have got a lot of reporting to do there, but just on a regular basis, we have a ton of reports that we have to turn back into state, and somebody's gotta track that. And so, you know, I will also point out, their central office staff, when COVID was at its height, our central office staff was in the building almost every day, helping fill in in classrooms, because we could not get substitutes. So, you know, people could think these folks are isolated away from students, but that's not the case with most of our central office staff. They are working with students indirectly and working to lead students and lead our division. So, you know, I'm not saying that we're not continuing to look at that, and that might be a place we may, may, may need to look at. Can we reduce some more staff at that level? Possibly. But, you know, I, I do point out that compared to other school divisions, our central office is probably smaller than most school divisions of our size, so.
I, I appreciate that very much, and don't misinterpret my concern for where, where, where my thought process is with this, but the in, in the time that I've been up here on this board, the teachers have always been a place that I've kind of hung my hat, because I think they're the ones that's there doing the work, and it's not being dismissive of anybody that's in the central office or anything that they, they contribute. But those that are in front of the, the students are the ones where I, I have a lot of focus. I want to go to page eight, and I've got a question here that sort of relates the way I interpret this, federal funding. There's a, it's, it's a footnote, number two, thirty five positions are funded with federal grant funds. Seven of those positions, five teachers, two O and M expire in FY twenty-two and/or FY twenty-three. Twenty-eight are recurring. When did we hire these?
I think we're on page four.
Okay, well, I'm looking at eight, I'm in the county.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Page four of the school board presentation, but, okay, go ahead.
So, what's, what is that telling me? And, and is it thirty-five teachers that we added, or, or staff members we added, that was used with SRR money, or ARP money, or CARES Act money?
No, this actually goes back to Title I dollars that we've had for decades, that are federal dollars to assist students from low socioeconomic backgrounds. So, we have two schools that qualify for Title I, and so, a lot of interventionists that work with those students, and they work with all students in that building, but the schools qualifies as Title I. So, most of those positions are instructional assistants, interventionists that work directly with students. They're just paid through Title I dollars, which are federal funds.
Okay, all right, thank you.
The seven that you mentioned, the five teachers and the two O and M were specifically CARES, SRR-funded to reduce class size, and also to address the cleanliness of our schools, the two O and M positions.
And those expire in FY twenty-two and/or twenty-three?
And/or twenty-three, that's a decision that the board will need to make about how we spend remaining SRR funds.
Okay. And there was a comment that you made, Dr. Jones, during your presentation, that we go back to the two million, whatever that number's gonna be, that you all had agreed, or maybe, I don't, let me put words in your mouth there, but you were gonna place this, these funds, or some of these funds, in your capital maintenance reserve fund?
That was just a conversation that Mr. Smith and I had had about if we received that two million as a block, how best to use it and maintain flexibility, and if it goes into the maintenance reserve fund, it would then, we could keep it there until we had to spend it. If it just becomes part of our operating budget, then we would have to earmark that within the operating budget, and then reappropriate it if we didn't spend it that next year.
Mr. Chairman, one
Yes, sir.
On that, I think, Dr. Jones, we, we're talking about putting it in a capital projects fund.
Microphone.
We're, we're planning on putting it in a capital projects fund for exactly those same reasons, so unspent money's be carried forward automatically. It would not be part of the capital reserve fund. It would be part of the capital projects fund, same, same function.
Okay.
But it wouldn't be as part of our million.
The same function, when you say the same function, excuse me, the capital maintenance reserve fund, that's fifty percent is what they can ask for, and it has to be approved by the board of supervisors before they can withdraw those funds or have access to those funds. That same thing doesn't apply.
In this case, in this case, the goal was to put the money in a separate, in the capital projects fund, as opposed to a general fund, where, where the reserve fund is, so that once appropriated, it would stay there until the board.
Decides, okay. That's all I have right now. Mr. Williams, you still have a question?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is a question for you, Ned. Is it really practical that we would take that two million dollars and buy down our long-term debt?
Most likely, at the rates we borrowed at, we would probably
I mean.
It, it probably makes sense for us. I didn't see the numbers, but I bet you we borrowed it less than three percent, so most likely, it would be the best use, but it could be. I, I don't think I've
Under what scenario would it be? If, you know, because our financial advisors always come and tell us when we have an opportunity.
They, they let us know when we can refund the funds, you're right. So, we probably, in fact, we're monitoring that regularly for you, so there's not, no option out there for any refundings on your existing debt. But the question is, you know, buying down debt is, is, is an option out there. It just, you wrestle with, you wrestle with the cost of money, and does it make sense?
All that's controlled by the market, correct?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Cox.
Ned, we don't, last I looked, we don't have any bonds that are callable, are they?
We do have callable bonds.
Okay, so we have some that we actually could implement something if we wanted to?
We could call some bonds.
Okay, thank you.
Can we just say, from the school board point of view here, you know, we don't know what all the rules are of that fund, but if, if that's something that is going to really bring down and save the county as a whole money, then we would like to know that from you, and so that we can consider that.
Well, I'm sure if it was an opportunity that made sense, and, and it was fiscally responsible, we'd probably tell you.
Okay, well, good. Well, we're counting on you doing so. Thank you.
Any other supervisors? Questions?
Mr. Chairman, when we're finished with Dr. Jones, I have some questions for Mr. Smith, but let's, let's finish with Dr. Jones first.
Nobody's jumping up asking any questions.
Are we there?
I think we've arrived.
All right. Mr. Smith, do you have this presentation?
Yes, sir.
Could we pull up?
Do I have it electronically? No, sir.
Electronically, could we pull it up on page nine? Actually, page ten, it's the last page. You see, actually, the, the actual last page is page ten. These are general questions. I'm just trying to understand what's, what's happening to us.
Could you fill the school board into, do we have that presentation?
Try and get it on screen.
Okay, thank you. We don't have it in front of us.
No, you don't have it in front.
Thank you.
Do we put this in the package for add-on package? School ratios?
Yes.
That's, that's where he's looking for. So, it would be in the add-on. We anticipated a question.
Okay, got, it should be the next page after that one. We'll, we'll come back to that one.
Are you, this is, this is not the same presentation, Mr. Cox.
Okay.
This is page nine, but is that the? I'm sorry, we had a hard time finding last week's presentation.
All right, let's, let's, can we go up to the transfer and zoom in on twenty-two, twenty-three? Okay, so, this is the transfer for the schools. Twenty-two is twenty-three million. Twenty two is twenty three million, seven eighty six and fiscal year proposed twenty three is. That's not the same number, that's not the same number.
About fifty thousand dollars different.
That's a different set of numbers.
It's slightly changed. Can you find it? We made this adjustment this morning, so it's this is this is today's version of which you saw last week.
Let's dispense with all of this. Let me let me let me ask my question, okay? The transfer that you distributed to us shows that the transfer, the school budget from twenty two to twenty three is going up nine point four percent. Okay, that's what it showed.
Yes, sir.
In the budget, in the model for total revenues. It shows that we are from twenty two to twenty three for the county going up four point nine percent. So fifty eight percent of our budget would be going up going up at nine point four percent. Whereas total revenue is a four point seven, so we are as a percentage of our budget, we are really loading up the schools. Significantly more than anybody else. Okay, we can't. Afford to grow it four point nine percent in the county and fund the schools at an increase of nine point six percent. That's that's the point. Okay, I don't know what the right number is, but that leaves for the other forty two percent of this county. Something much less than four point nine percent. Because we've spent so much more on school, so here here's that's our fiscal problem now. Can you pull up? Your twenty twenty three operating budget that you provided with us?
The county administrator's recommendation.
Yes, yes, twenty twenty three, yes.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
So for the schools, we were looking at nine point six percent increase and for the rest of the county, we were looking at something like four point nine. Now I want to look at. The twenty three operating budget that Mr. Smith has provided us with.
Where?
Because it has one number on there that's extremely interesting.
This page you were talking about, Mr. Cox?
No.
I'm guessing now, so I'm sorry.
All right. You provided us with an operating budget that shows for FY twenty twenty three proposed. At the bottom. You show a school capital maintenance reserve number of seven hundred and ninety nine thousand dollars.
That's here.
Okay, there it is.
Yes, sir.
Blow that sucker up. So based on the two million one transfer. This says that we'll end up with a capital maintenance reserve, if these numbers are correct, of almost eight hundred thousand dollars. So. So the question is, why would we do that? Why would we transfer two million one to create a capital maintenance reserve, which is leftover funds? Of seven hundred and ninety nine thousand.
I'm sorry, Mr. Cox, the seven ninety nine is represents the piece of the capital budget that we plan on funding. By utilizing the school maintenance reserve, the million four that we built up. And we isolated that for you here, just so you would know that.
So this this looks like seven ninety nine is left over.
It's just it's just a carve outs to make sure you understand this isn't coming from our general fund balance, it's coming from the reserve.
I'm just trying to, okay?
Yes, sir.
If we have that much money, why would we? Would we would we budget for it? So we're still spending for the schools significantly faster than the revenues that we're getting into the county. How did we get? How did we come up with a two million one? Your suggested transfer, how did that? How did we arrive at that?
That's a that's a loaded question, but I guess the the way we get there and the way we started the conversation with the school board was we we projected. The school board trends forward to fifty two million, four forty six. And came up with at the growth rate assumptions that we're making for schools and for county. That their budget would be at fifty two million, four forty six. Then we turned and took all the state and federal revenues and local charges that the school board is estimating and backed that off of the fifty two million four. To get a twenty six million dollar number that we provided to school board. So we backed in, well, once we determined that the levels we thought the budget was trending towards, then we backed up the revenues that we thought they were getting from the outside. And that left the county with sixty, which was two point one million dollars more than we did last year.
So we're can. We're keeping a constant trend line of growth. Rather than any reduction change in that growth line, and that's how we get to two million one.
We grow in expenditures at the constant trend line.
Okay, and based on one set of numbers, sounds like you 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 as we go forward, you've changed some of them, okay? We were growing, the transfer was going to grow at nine point six percent. It sounds like it's going down a little bit now.
Going down, I think fifty thousand dollars from what we.
I'm sorry?
Fifty thousand from where we were before.
So it is still still nine and a half percent increase.
Yes, sir.
That's a large increase.
I thought the number was eight, nine, but it was it is two million one is large increase, yes.
Okay. I don't have any more questions about that. At this time, we're going to take a five minute break.
Board members have any more questions? We'll start on a different subject matter here. I've got another one, maybe a couple more. We had a citizen come down, raise some pretty good questions. About our grants, the S R, the A R P, CARES Act and those funds being audited. The expenditure of those funds and where they do. Do we have anything in place for that? Accounting's perspective?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, on an annual basis, our federal funds are all audited by our independent auditors. And through June thirtieth, we take care of entire first round of CARES Act funding that we received. The new five point one million, I guess, is part of S R three, the new five point one million that we received. That's right. American, that's right. The new five point one million is in place now, and we have three years to spend that. And we've allocated three million and twenty four thousand towards our broadband initiative. So but the audit process is in place on an annual basis for any monies we spend, even in this year for broadband will be part of the year in audit and federal disclosure on that.
Okay, thanks, sir. Dr. Jones, has the what we have here, does it have the D R S numbers all included? Or is there additional B R S? So the B R S contribution on behalf of the county is all straight and we're good with that?
Yep.
Okay. That answers all of my questions.
And Madam Chair. Ms. Smith?
I'd like to also add that with this grant money, from my understanding of the discussions that we've had in the last several weeks. In regards to all monies, but specifically the grant monies that we that a lot of these are ongoing. They wrote the proposal for the grants to use them in certain areas as we see that. Our time for using them for like the contact tracing or the. Extra instructional assistance that we might have hired. If when that need goes away, we are able to rewrite the grant to show where the additional monies will then be spent. So.
Good point.
I think we are, we're trying to keep be good stewards of the money and make sure that. It is all being spent for the for the betterment of our our teachers and our students.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. That was brought up at the last workshop yesterday. So when will those decisions be made, Dr. Jones, at the end of the this year, June thirtieth?
Yeah, yes, ma'am, I think it June thirtieth, when we will go back and look at the budget and I'll remind, I know the board's aware of this, but on board docs. We have a complete list of our budget for A R P S R funds. What we budgeted in the grant application, what the description of those uses are. We will certainly look at those and then tally up what we've spent in each area and where there's excess. Or unspent funds, contact tracers is a good example. We got rid of our contact tracers when we stopped contact tracing. So we had budgeted to have those funds for them for the remainder of the year. That'll be then be money that we will then be able to spend in another way that will bring back to the school board to make a decision. And then we can just amend the grant application for next year based on the new reality that we have in front of us.
On those changes.
Right. The other thing I'll say and point about the grants is that legally they have to be related to the effects of the pandemic. And they are to supplement rather than supplant budgeted funds.
And that we discussed that yesterday as well. Okay, so let's go back to that definition again. Remember, we said that this supplemented.
It has to be in addition to what we spend in a certain area that but it has to be related directly to the impact of the pandemic.
Supplant. Yeah, and and then give our definition for supplant.
Supplant just means that we can't spend it in lieu of spending bed budgeted funds. So, you know, if we had a teacher in our budget, currently a history teacher, we couldn't. Start paying for that with grant funds because it's already part of our budgeted funds. It needs to be something in addition to not instead of budgeted funds.
So when we were discussing this yesterday, we said that our operating budget is different and it's over here. And then the grant money is over here and we have to keep them separate because.
Because there are specific uses that are required under the terms of the grant and we are audited by the State Department of Education. And in addition to the. Auditors that we hire from the counties and we have to be able to say that we've met those terms of how the money should be spent for whatever. The terms of that grant are.
And the grant money can only be used for the pandemic areas.
For different areas within the pandemic, depending on.
Learning loss.
Right, exactly, that's the main.
All right, thank you for.
And Madam Chair, Dr. Jones, can you put the dates on that when the last monies? We have until what date to spend those all of those money?
The end of, I think it's September of twenty twenty four is the last date that we have.
And where is that on our website? Is there a specific tab that says? Grant monies or what what our director of technology is here, can you tell us where that is, Mr. Dorrett?
It's on it's on board docs on our workshop for yesterday, we posted it.
Oh, I thought you meant on the website website. Oh, it's on board.
It's on the website too, and I'll be happy to share where that's located, but I think the easiest place is to go to board docs.
From yesterday's March fourteenth workshop. All right, thank you.
Anyone else questions? Okay, we'll open up the public comment period for the second time. Anyone wishing to speak to the boards, someone down. Individual has three minutes. Who wants to speak on behalf of a group, five minutes, please state your name and address.
Hi, again, Darrell Griffin, Dorset Ridge Circle. I just wanted to make a couple of quick points and then also just a bit of advice from my level of experience at what I do. And Dr. Jones may have been using it just as an example of our failure, but the average lifespan of a chiller, even a builder's grade. Is eighteen to twenty years. If you're going through one every seven to ten, you're doing it wrong. You're either not treating the water, something's not right, you should not be going through that equipment that quickly. I work on chillers all day, every day, they got thirty, thirty five, forty years on them and are still going. Now and then you got to tear them down and rebuild them, you got to rot them out, you got to clean them out. But the key thing generally, when you see premature failure like that is a lack of water treatment. And I don't know if y'all are using county water or well water as your makeup water for your hydronic systems, but that's something you should really look at. Because it's not just a chiller being affected, that'll affect your air handlers as well as your boilers and everything else that's run on the hydronics. Um, another point. I'm trying to be nice about this, but when you say you're cutting positions and you're listing eight teaching assistants. And half of them are positions that are currently vacant and the other half are positions that are pretty much expiring. With all respect, that's just disingenuous. You should, at least on the budget item sheet, say, we're eliminating these positions that are not currently held or eliminate. Because what happens is the paper reports on it, Joe Public or Joe in Public sees it. And they say, oh, they're cutting eight teaching assistants, when that just simply isn't true. It's not the case, okay? Or if you're moving, you know, the assistant director of H R up to the position, okay, well, maybe do that teaching assistants like you did that. You said it right on your thing, you said assistant director of H R, we're not going to fund that position or fill that position, we're promoting that. That's just a point. And in terms of transparency, I really appreciate the steps that are being taken, but I would suggest that, you know, because. The skepticism's earned, I've heard before, including from a board member, how things were required. When that turned out to not be the case, that it was completely voluntary and elective in terms of some of these programs and things that we're doing. So perhaps it would be best with the travel and the conferences that you are keeping. You don't need to list names necessarily or what they are, but you could say what program is it for? Why is it required and who are we sending? I think that would go a long way toward restoring that trust. In conclusion, as I said earlier, I think you're top heavy in central office. I think you get some busybodies that get too much time on their hands and thus shouldn't need more money. But I do greatly appreciate the steps that y'all are taking in the right direction and thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Vicki Hurt, four eight two Bell Bridge Circle. I want to thank the school board, they have really worked diligently on the budget. I have personally attended most of the school board budget workshops or watched on Zoom. And each of them has diligently gone to the budget, a couple of points. There's a lot to be done and it can't all be done in the few weeks left in this budgeting process. I encourage particularly when we get a new superintendent that we go back and we look at the organizational chart for the central office administration. And really evaluate those jobs. There may be some hybrid positions that we can use teachers, partial teaching, partial administration. To have the folks in the classroom, but yet cover the administrative duties that we need as well. I am a proponent that schools are for education. I don't think they should be in the business of running a bus garage. I think that's more appropriate to be run by the county. And I would and that's something that we can't do in these next few weeks in this budget process. I think that's something we need to start looking at this summer so we can make plans for that. I think a purchasing agent to oversee purchases for both the county and the schools would be quite useful. Buying in bulk and a checks and balance system, I think, is always super beneficial to us. Those are my observations and I do know the S R funds and the money we've gotten from the CARES Act. It is very confusing as to how the money is spent and where it's coming from. And I do applaud it, yesterday's meeting, there was a tab that started outlining that much clearer for the public to understand. And I do applaud at yesterday's meeting, there was a tab that started outlining that much clearer for the public to understand. As I said, it's a good start. This is the first year that the school budget is really starting to be analyzed appropriately. But I do encourage that this is just the beginning. We really need to start working, the school board and the board of supervisors together, to be the best stewards of our constituents' money. Once again, thank y'all so much. It's a big job to do, and I certainly appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hello, Jack one Anderson, 3342 Pineacre Tribe. I too appreciate the transparency that the school board's budget workshops brought. I also attended some in-person, watched some others. I've commented at school board meetings about the, the school board, the school's website being a mess, and it really is. And for transparency's sake, it would be great if you had, when you do a revision, which is necessary, to put all those things that are in board docs, maybe also on a place on the main webpage. Because I know how to navigate to board docs, but if you had a tab that said, school financial documents or something like that, that would aid a lot in transparency. I too support looking at turning over operations of the bus garage to the county. Again, after some time and discussion, it can't happen overnight. I've tried to track some of the wasteful expenditures. I mentioned some of them earlier. I'd also like to mention the Verizon wireless. We have 51 cell phones now for the schools that they, we have evidently three employees are so important that they have two cell phones assigned to them. And we had one employee that made international calls during the Christmas break. I hope that they didn't have to take county business during their vacation. If that's the case, that's fine. But if those were personal calls, those need to be reimbursed. And I, I look at the phone book, the phone bill now monthly. I've been trying to track that. And there's really been no change or decrease since I first made you aware of that some months ago. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening again. Thank you for all of your time. It's been very informative. Again, Steven Rosel, 4209 Old Buckingham Road. A lot of talk about transparency, and yes, this is a whole lot more transparency than I've seen from other counties. However, I'm getting a little confused. I may be a young man, but I do remember Enron. And they were cooking books and had multiple sets of books. And I'm getting a lot of confusion about the grant money. Dr. Jones has instructed me that it has been separate from the regular budget. There's been comments that have been made this evening in responses to some excellent questions by the board members about where this money is coming from. It's been referenced that it's S R grant money. And so what is it? Is the grant money into our actual budget? Is it supplementing? Whatever the case may be, because you guys reference transportation costs in the budget were $86,000 or $86,000, $7,000 short in the budget, yet we received $227,976 in budgeted items, line items, from the S R one, two, and three grant money. We are one of the lowest in custodial costs out of the 12 counties, surrounding counties. Yet those positions, there was $128,000 budgeted in the S R grant money. We're looking at funding new teachers to cut down class sizes, which is great. Although the Palatine looks fantastic right now as far as class sizes. In the grant money, $510,915 for new teacher positions over the next three years. And so these are things that are listed from the county as budget items through this grant money. It's free money, right? It's, we get to do whatever we want with it. I mean, if you read the bill, you pretty much use the language to do whatever you want with it. Where we've got budget shortfalls for the school, yet we have all this money that's supposedly being allocated to these same things that we can't find enough money in the budget for. And I think there needs to be greater transparency on how this grant money has actually been spent. And it started in April of last year. And by law, this board, the school board, is required to have public comment and review it every six months. And so we cannot wait until July this summer. Okay, it is in the law every six months with public comment. All right, and the public comment needs to be predicated on the fact that we get accurate information prior to public comment period, which means, looking at this, because you guys can find this, shows all the budgeted items that you guys have put in, using the S R one, two, and three grant money under the CARES Act and American Rescue Plan Act. We don't know where most of this has gone. And we're missing money in the budget where we've got $3.1 billion, according to this given to the county. Yeah, Mr. Smith says we have 5.1 million coming to the county in grant money. We need to figure out what's really going on here. Thank you for your time. Keep up the good work.
Thank you. Not seeing anyone else. Mr. Smith, anyone on Zoom?
It's clear, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right.
Dr. Jones, if you could have Dr. Tibbs give Mr. Griffith the call about, I know you were just using the chiller as an example, but if he could just talk with him about, if he wouldn't mind, using his expertise to make sure that we are treating the water correctly and explain all that to make sure we are, I think that would be helpful. And then I think also, we did get an email about the the cell phones. And quite frankly, we've been busy with the workshop yesterday and the meeting yesterday. And they've been quite busy trying to get the new numbers for today's meeting. So we could, if we could answer Ms. Anderson's email tomorrow, that would be great. And then I'm not quite sure about the S R funds, what we can do with that to explain that better. Maybe you and I can meet and see what we can do with that. Thank you. We appreciate the comments.
Mr. Smith, county administrator comments?
No comments, Mr. Chairman.
You want to have the school board's comments?
Thank you. Any school board comments? District one? District two?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Smith?
I would like to say that if, if the county would like to operate this transportation department, then make your proposal and bring it forward as that to be discussed. I think there are board members that are questioning that exchange. And if we can see in print your proposal of how you would operate it and do it different or do it better, I'd like to see it. So instead of just talking about it, put it on piece of paper and bring it forward. And let's see if we can come to an agreement on it. Maybe we'll like it, maybe we won't. I think it is an understanding that the county, the community has, and I hope they do, that the school board doesn't exist to serve the board of supervisors. Our job is to build the best case it can to put the most resources it can in the hands of the people responsible for educating our children. It is the board of supervisors' job to balance that request against the physical needs of the other components of our county government. Our school board needs to have a strong communication structure to inform and engage both internal and external stakeholders in setting and achieving district goals. My first concern is the students because their future depends on our actions. And I know that it, many, many of the board members and the board of supervisors and the school board, if not all of them, feel the very same way. So I look forward to further discussions and further agreements that we can make going forward. Thank you.
District three?
Yes, Madam Chair. Nothing other than just to thank the board of supervisors for meeting with us tonight. It's always an informative meeting, and I truly do appreciate as a board member. Thank you.
District four?
I just echo what Mrs. Ayers just said. I appreciate the collaboration this evening. The discussion has been good. It's been healthy. It's been good for our county, for us, for them to see us working together. Because this is important business. We both have the same goals in mind. We want to better our county. We want to have good schools, good education, so that our students are getting the best that they can possibly get. And so this is a good time, and let's continue to work together on all of these issues, even the discussion about the garage. Because that keeps coming up, and obviously that's something that we need to address. And so let's, let's address it and put it to bed.
And I just want to again say to the public, the comments, we appreciate you bringing things up to us. We are trying to look at everything that has been brought up. It, we have been busy. We have asked the staff to do many things to give us information. And please be patient as we get this information, but we still appreciate you bringing it to our attention. Thank you.
Board of Supervisors, comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Williams.
I'd like to thank the school board for their comments tonight, particularly Ms. Smith's last comments, because I thought that was very reasonable, well-thought-out request. The second thing I would like to do tonight is to request an upcoming workshop that we have the presentation that we couldn't include because of time limitations at our previous meeting. And that is inviting the people from the Dash Transportation Program that was created over in Hanover County, bringing over their staff, bringing over, you know, the folks from D R P, D R P T, Department of Rail and Public Transportation, that are in charge of the 5310 federal funds. Now, what they were able to do over in Hanover County was create an alternative transportation system for their county for the transportation disadvantaged using those 5310 funds. So I would like to have that placed on an upcoming workshop so we can invite those people to come over and tell us how they do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Williams.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. McClellan.
I would like to say thank you for being part of the first, my first workshop with the school board. It was good. And, and I think I opened a can of worms with an instructional assistant. My wife was an instructional assistant for Palatine County Schools for 16 years. So, and I know how hard they work and how much they help the teachers out. So, thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. McClellan. Anyone else? Anyone else quiet? I'll finish it up, which will probably be a little bit redundant after you go past ten others. Eleven others. Thank the citizens who came and spoke. Thank you very much. This is my third year, I guess my third year of listening to board and supervisor budget conversations. I want to hear from you, the citizens. I want you to come and say something at this podium. I applaud you who come in here tonight. It's not easy. But it certainly tells me that you have, and I've seen most of you at school board, means you have a passion. You want things to run right, and you want things to be that magical word that everybody says, transparent. I applaud you very much. I want to applaud the school board. Chairwoman Ms. Emo, your board members. It's a relationship that this county needs, which is us, supervisors, and you. Palatine County thrives with a good school system. A poor school system, we don't thrive. It's instrumental. It's as instrumental as it is for us to sit up here as the elected leaders in this county and work together. We don't have to agree, and trust me, we won't. But we can work together to make Palatine and our school system better. Board of Supervisors will be having a budget workshop on March the 22nd. I welcome the citizens and everyone to come and participate in that. It's at 3:00 PM in the afternoon. If you can't come, you can, maybe you can Zoom. If you can't Zoom at 3:00 PM, you can look at it later the next day. But there's many opportunities for you to visit and see what's going on in this county, and we'd like to hear from you. That's all I've got to say. Thank you, Dr. Jones. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Thank you, Mr. Johns, Sharla, Mr. Voe. Thank you all, Mr. Shorty, for coming out and staying in these late hours. And there's probably somebody I missed, Mr. Durett back there. But thank you for coming and spending extra time here. Ms. Toll, you know, it's, it's not hard. I mean, it's not easy for you guys. This is extra hours that a lot of people don't realize. You put these hours in, and you come out, and you make sacrifices too. So thank you, and I look forward to working with the school board on the rest of this budget.
Me as well.
Go ahead.
School board meeting adjourned.
Supervisors.